Absolutely, yep. I already talked to Rob. Okay, thank you. Good morning, welcome to the March 22nd, 2022 meeting of the County Facilities Committee. We will begin this morning's meeting with discussion approval of the minutes from the prior committee Have a motion to approve those. Supervisor Thomas, second. Supervisor Diamond, any discussion? Changes, deletions, alterations, et cetera? Seeing none, I'll call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're starting with the airport agenda this morning. And first order of business under action agenda, new business items, request miscellaneous fly-in. Fleet Air will be promoting Learn to Fly Month and Women of Aviation Initiative. Airport manager, Mr. Mapp?
Sure, I believe this is an excellent opportunity to discuss the Learn to Fly Month for Women Aviation Initiative hosted by Fleet Air. They propose the initial date of May 21st, a rain delayed day of May 22nd. Food and beverages will be provided for the land side. Some safety conferences for pilots will also be hosted. So if anyone has some free time that weekend, I would invite everyone, assuming it passes, and I'm ahead of myself, to come on, come on out and learn a little bit more about aviation and especially as it relates to the Queensbury and Warren County area.
Great, and that was again, May 22nd?
May 21st, initial date, but a rain delayed day of May 22nd.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion, any questions? So, do we need a motion? Supervisor McGowan?
Well, it was a discussion, but well, I'll move my discussion into a motion to move this, uh... Move this forward.
Okay, and second, thank you, uh, any, yes, Supervisor Thomas?
Are we going to promote this and advertise it, so?
They'll be doing the promotion and advertising for it.
You know, people need to know.
Good point, good point. Any other questions, discussion, et cetera? Seeing none, I'll call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So be it, thank you. Under discussion items, annual ARFF training? Yes?
So Aircraft Rescue and Firefighting Training, under our Part 139, Section 319, the personnel are required to have initial training as well as annual recurrent training every 12 calendar months. So Derek and Scott are two aircraft or maintenance ops and arc guys. They attend Monroe Community College for specialized aircraft firefighting training. This is for the instance such as back in November, you had the accident at the airport, and those guys were the first responders on scene. So it's very important that these guys make sure that their training is up to date as much as possible.
Sure. Any questions, comments? Supervisor Stroud?
Robin, is, are the folks that we have at South Queensbury Volunteer Fire Department involved in this training too?
Not for this one, no. So this requirement requires that these guys specifically have this specialized firefighter training, but they are not involved as a requirement.
But isn't Queensbury South Volunteer Fire Department also considered to be the on-call department, should there be an incident?
That do respond to incidents, accidents at the airport, but they do have their own separate training requirements.
Superintendent?
Supervisors Stroud, they're, they're more than welcome to, to attend this training, but they'll have to pay for it. But it's, it's training out of Monroe, I think it's, Monroe County Community College, yes. So they're more than welcome to attend that training as, as kind of the second assist to us, but we, we need it annually, every year.
Yeah, all right, well, maybe I'll inform them of this and, you know, they may ask for respect and to the town to do it, but Robin, I'll get in touch with you.
Please.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on. Referrals pending items regarding the proposed three bay teehanger being proposed by Rich Air at the Warren County Airport. Committee was advised of an environmental issue that had been identified with wetlands, but further information being presented when available. That was February 28th. Superintendent Hedges?
So Friday after the board meeting, I met with Rich Air, as well as Robin and their engineer, Tom Hutchins. We reviewed the site where they were proposing the building. There will be an impact based on what we can see right now to the riverine wetlands if they don't change their design. So they're working through it with their engineer right now to change that design, which most likely will involve some type of retaining wall on the backside of that slope.
And that'll mitigate or eliminate?
That'll keep them out of that, that riverine wetland area.
Thank you, and this, this is in regard to Resolution 122, which was withdrawn at last Friday's Board Supervisors Meeting?
Correct.
Thank you. Supervisor Bramer?
Thank you. No, I fully respect the engineers' opinions here, and I'm sure they will come up with some fantastic solution. I would like to know if there have also been wetlands experts out to review and actually delineate?
We haven't had, we haven't delineated, but we've had the airport delineated year after year for wetlands out there, so we pretty much know where they are. But a riverine wetland is considered kind of a trench or a ditch type of wetland. Where the concern that we have is not that they'll be in the ditch or this riverine wetland, that they will have to get down there to work or grade off into it, which we don't want them to do. It's not up to, to the county. We have asked them, they have to go through the secret process anyways, so they'll have to determine based on a meeting with the Corps, which we asked them to do. And I'll be part of that meeting as well as Robin as well, to determine where those wetlands are. So we will have the Corps out there to make sure that we're not impacting them.
You're welcome. Anyone else? If not, that'll conclude the airport agenda. Thank you, Robin. And we will move, move into Buildings and Grounds Agenda. Under Action, New Business Items, first the request for new contract, the term agreement for generator maintenance. Superintendent Hedges?
Yeah, so this, this is exactly what it states. It's a contract for generator maintenance. There's many generators throughout the county, and this basically covers all those generators as part of this contract. The name of the company who won the bid was Emergency Power Systems, and the tab sheets are attached on the back of the resolution.
Do we have a motion? Supervisor McGowan, second by Supervisor Stroud. Any discussion, any questions, comments? There being none, I'll call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So be it. The next is amended county budget regarding insurance recovery.
So this was an accident that we had down at our south end shop. Basically, a car came off the road and hit the, the existing fence out in front of our shop, which is a county fence. This came out of the Buildings and Grounds Repair and Maintenance, and this is just put the money back from the insurance recovery.
Very good. Do we have a motion? Supervisor Thomas, second by Supervisor McGowan. Any discussion, any questions, comments? Seeing none, I'll call a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, discussion items, Work Order Request Program.
Currently, the Work Order Request Program is still plugging along. We're at 1,818 work orders since the inception, which is an average of about 115 work orders a month that we're keeping going and flowing. The, the fleet car request program is at 382 since it began in September of last year, but that's actually started to pick up as the mandates have been released a little bit more and more from the state, more people are getting out. So we're starting to get, basically every fleet car we have is starting to go out the door every day.
So these two programs seem to be working very well?
Yes.
Good, excellent. Countryside?
Countryside, we're at a status right now, we're waiting on Clough Harbor to give us the conceptual drawings.
Right.
That's where that stands.
Actually, not conceptual, advanced detailed plan drawings. They're past a conceptual point at this, this time.
Right, and we're, we're in good shape with funding for these improvements?
As, as of right now, we are.
Good, excellent. Charging stations, I know we discussed this, I think at the last meeting, and an update on?
So I, I have a couple graphs within the package today, and I also have a spreadsheet that basically shows the stations, the sessions that were on each station, the energy that was consumed, the gross amount of fees paid, and then the net revenue to the county. So as of date, since December of 2020, we have netted $155.32. If you look at the graphs, you can see the type of usage we have had. We have a fair amount of usage each month, but again, it's not, it's not a breadwinner for the county by any means. The other thing that I didn't put into the package, but I wanted to let the committee know is, we also are upkeeping maintenance on those. We have a maintenance contract with ChargePoint as well as a, a cloud plan with ChargePoint that totals of about almost $7,000 a year. I know we're moving towards going greener, and I know that if we start to get electric vehicles, those charging stations out there will provide use for our electric vehicles that we have in-house, not that we would make any money out of ourselves, but they would certainly suffice to charge any vehicles that we would have. I know the industry is now moving towards the DCFC charging stations, which is the fast charging stations.
Right.
But again, I just wanted to kind of give an update to the committee on where we're at with our charging stations, and if there was any questions that anybody had asked.
Sure, Supervisor McGowan?
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Kevin, you know, I remember when we posed having these, and, you know, it was going to be free, forgetting it for nothing, you know, it's a grant, which all we know is, we all know that grants always come from somewhere. But I, I don't ever remember hearing the cost of $7,000 a year to maintain them and to run the credit card out of. So actually, so this, our net is $155, what, from last month, just one month?
No, that's since the inception of them being installed.
Oh, okay, so.
Excuse me, that was when again?
December of 2020.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, you know, it, it just amazes me is that, you know, this is actually costing the county money. I, I mean, I'm happy they're there, and I'm not sure because this is where we want to move from, you know? They say away from fossil fuels and everything, but, you know, the, the more I read and the, and the more I find out is, you know, where does electricity come, where's the majority of electricity come from? You know, it, and I know we want to go green and we want to do this, but, but this is a great option. Maybe it was the wrong location. We did pick this area because of, of the outlets right up there. You know, maybe we could have benefited more having it in the back for our county use with more electric vehicles as our, our fleet is, sounds like it, it is pretty large and it will be going back out now that the restrictions are done. But I'm just, I just don't, I just wanted to go on record stating that I don't remember hearing, we're going to get these charging stations and, and we're getting them from free, and it's going to be a benefit to the community, but I don't remember hearing that it was going to cost us, you know, $7,000 a year.
Yeah, and the, if I can respond, the first year we had these in place, it was free. It was covered under ChargePoints agreement with us. After that, there was, it's an upkeep and maintenance on those, which I guess it was good that we had the plans in place because the second year, or late in 2021, one of the motherboards on those went out, and it was a $6,000 cost to replace it, didn't cost us anything because it was covered on it. Well, we paid for it by having the contract in place, but it, it was covered under that contract. And again, my, my guys are not expertise on these stations. They can operate them, I mean, they can make sure that they have power going to them, but beyond that, that's, that's the extent of their, their expertise. So they will benefit if we start to move towards electric vehicles. You know, that's a perfect opportunity for us to charge our vehicles overnight, and that's, that's what those systems or those charging stations are basically made for is overnight charging. So, I mean, that, it is a cost though, and again, I just wanted to update the committee, you know, kind of some of the infrastructure that we have in place, and particularly that one, just to kind of let you know where we're at with it.
Of course. So, not trying to put you on the spot, Kevin, but I, I know at the time that we put them in, you know, technology advances all the time and quickly. You know, what's the opportunity of maybe changing them to a, a fast charge where the commuter can come in off the north way and plug in and have a little lunch and charge up to be able to head up to Montreal or down in New York City?
I don't believe, and I, I'll look into it, but I don't believe you can change these units over that. I think you'd have to replace these units with the DCFC charging stations, and those typically run about $40,000 apiece. The, all five of those out there ran us $40,000, which was covered under an ICERTA grant, and then the infrastructure utility work to basically hook the power up then was covered from National Grid. But if we were to move to the DCFC stations, most likely it would be replacement of these out there. But I will definitely look into seeing if they can, if technology that they can change these machines over, but I don't believe they can.
Maybe this, uh, question, how many electric cars do we have in our fleet now that might be parked out back?
We don't have any.
Okay, thank you.
I'm working on that, Brad.
Supervisor? Supervisor Stroud, did you have?
Yes, thank you. Do we have three phase out there? Probably do.
We do.
Yeah, okay. That would be needed for the high speed.
Thank you. Just so I understand, so backing up, initially, we had a agreement, maintenance, whatever, that, that took care of that expense for that motherboard, but now, do we still have that, or?
We have, we have the maintenance agreement still in place, and that's what we're paying between the maintenance agreement and the cloud sharing, that's the, for the programming. They're both in place, that's the cost of the almost $7,000 a year. So we have right now, I just forewarned them, we have two of the stations that show are not operating at this time, and I, we put a call into them, they're coming out there to, to fix those two stations. That, again, no cost to us because it's covered under that maintenance agreement.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Supervisor Bramer, did you have a question?
Well, I would say, I would defer to Mr. Rogers. There's been work with the fleet on trying to purchase electric vehicles through our purchasing department. It's been difficult purchasing any vehicles, as I'm sure you all know, those who run towns, if you need vehicles, there aren't any out there, but I don't know if you want to add anything?
Yeah, currently, right now, Julie put out the bid for EV vehicles as part of the next fleet purchases, and right now, they're running approximately eight months at a minimum to try and get any sort of those type of vehicles right now, and that's just for a small SUV and/or sedan. Unless it's on, on their lot right this moment, you're not going to get them the way that we're looking to get them.
Right, and I, based on what I hear in the news lately, that may get worse.
Correct.
Because of the availability or lack thereof of the raw materials, the batteries, et cetera.
Correct.
Yeah, we're, we're experiencing that with, with all our, our trucks and equipment as well. My shop just ordered our two new tandems for next year, and I believe they told us sometime in the middle of 2023, we would get those trucks.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Anyone else? If not, we'll move along. We have a presentation on utility cost recovery.
Yeah, I think we'll, yeah, why don't we do that now, and then we'll go to the, so I'm always looking for ways at DBW or under facilities to save the county money or to look to see if we're being overcharged or things like that. Supervisor Bruno and Supervisor Bramer referred a gentleman to me by the name of Glenn Campbell, and no, he's not the singer, who is here today to present to us, he, for utility recovery, and, and I don't want to tell exactly what he does, but I, the gist of it is that he'll look at our utility bills and determine whether or not we've been charged or overcharged on any of our bills, and then they would recoup some of that money for us. But if the Chairman of the Committee will allow me, I would have Mr. Campbell come up to the podium.
Absolutely.
And I believe we have a presentation which was handed out to all the supervisors, and I, I believe, yes, right up, right up there, Mr. Campbell, and Amanda's got that on the screen right now.
Oh, wow, I feel so at home.
There you go.
Oh, thank you very much, Kevin, I appreciate the introduction, and Dan Bruno, I haven't, I haven't chucked in your hand, but.
I should put the face to the name.
Thank you, and Claudia, thank you very much. Before I get into all, all of the fancy slides, beyond the thank you, I just want to let you all know that I just love what I do. The reason I do is, there's always good news at the end of the day. First good news is, we found you a million dollars, and, you know, that's great news. The other great news is, we didn't find you anything. So the great news is that you have been and will go into the future being charged the right tariffs and rates. So with that, and as I go, please, if anybody has any, any interim questions before we get to the end, be happy to address them. This fabulous little slide here starts with what it is that we, what it is that we do. Can I advance this here? Wow, all I have to do is ask. So, actually, maybe before we even get in, involved, is there, are there any pressing questions that anybody had before we get into it, so I can be sure to address it? All right, so ultimately, according to the, you know, our wonderful Congress down in, in Washington, they've come to a conclusion that about $19 billion of overcharge takes place. It doesn't seem to be too much of a worry or a concern about the utilities companies. They're happy, no, they're not happy, but they are obligated by law to give the money back if they've overcharged. So our job is to identify what those overcharges might be, present it. It's clear by, by legislation as to what they, what, what the rates and tariffs should be, and the check comes at some point in the future. They don't write it the next day, unfortunately. So, next, please. And I, so TRI is our parent company, and they've been around for about, well, about 30 years, this is a little bit out of date. Lily Steinman is the person who started that company. She was involved in the telecommunications companies and realized on the client side of the business that there was a problem, and they were, she realized that she would be able to make some, make a name for herself, so to speak, by doing this job from the customer's point of view. So she's done that, and then a number of years ago, about five years ago, ST Network was established as a nonprofit organization within the, or under the umbrella of TRI. Our purpose is not only to find, just as TRI does, find these overpayments or whatever, but the funds that come as a result of our efforts to this process, we give to underdeveloped areas, either by water or by solar power. Right now, it's in the Southwest Native American group that we're, but we have, I guess, aspirations to do it in other places around the world. So ultimately, what, and I, thank you for letting me know that, or that maybe I was going to do this, I'm not that bright. They, they don't give me the keys to the kingdom, so to speak, but for understanding all of the different tariffs, all of the different classifications of businesses, municipalities, airports, whatever, but at the end of the day, they go through that process in the back room, and ultimately, you're, we all get told what happens at the end of all of that. And our process really is very simple. Talking with Kevin at the onset of the meeting, if we decide to move forward on all of this, we need one bill from all of the different utilities that you do, not months of bills, not, but we need the complete bill, all pages, all, all of that. And from that, and any other knowledge that you have that says, okay, three years ago, we had a different telephone company, and that's who it transferred over to or from, and with those pieces of, of knowledge, they can go back the five to seven years, depending on the utility that they'll go through, and we'll get an indication fairly early on. One of the things that we ask for is a view-only password to get into your, into your accounts. With that, we're able to see the information a whole lot quicker. When we communicate with the utilities these days, especially in this world of COVID, they hide behind this. They really want to give you guys the money, you know, they just don't, but they have to, but they'll delay. So if we have the passwords to get in and see, we're able to get the knowledge that we have, need, rather than waiting for them to come back and say, oh, yes, this is the information you're looking for. It might be seven or eight more months on top of the process if we don't have that wonderful password. And I guess that's, I mean, that really is the simple process, so I think we're close to the end, but if we could go to the next one, yes, this is, this is the letter of authority that we'll need, signed by you all on your letterhead, saying that, that we have the authority to do this work. The next one is the agreement. You know, the nuts and bolts of this is that, let's say we find $1,000. At the end of the day, that $1,000 is going to come to you. What the essence of this agreement says, you're going to let us have 50% of that money. We take that money and we go and do the good deeds that we're doing with, with the power and, and water. But ultimately, it's money that has already left many, many years ago or many months ago, we are finding it and giving it back to you, and we get to share, hopefully get to share at the end of the day. If not, we'll have a party that says you get, everybody did exactly what they were supposed to do in charging you. So next, please. You know, again, I have no inclination to say, gee, I heard that, or I have any inside know, inside knowledge that you guys have been overcharged for anything, so I have no idea. There might be no money, there might be $3, there might be $3 million. We won't know until the analysis is done. And next, I think is, last one, yes, thank you. So I'll open it up to questions, comments?
Supervisor McGowan?
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. What is the average recovery expenses you have found with municipalities our side?
Not sure I can give you an average, because it does vary. I know that, I can give you a very interesting example of a hotel or a hospital in Syracuse, where just in the data communications, we found $3 million. And I just finished the town of Lake George, and we found nothing. And just finished the, the work up at Fort Wayne Henry Resort, and we found 3,000. So I wish I could answer that question with more intelligence. I know that 87% of the people that, or 87% of the organizations that we go looking for, we find something. Size depends.
Then I understand that. Questions? Then I understand that. Uh, question two, um. If. There is no upcharge cost to do this, you're taking a gamble of finding money?
Yes, sir.
If not, you're not going to come back when you find zero and, and slap us up for a couple thousand dollar bill?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
Supervisor Stroll.
Well, thank you. Um, yeah, we've done this at the town and I know others have done this. And almost always there's some recovery of overcharge. But I have noticed differences. I mean, some firm will do this for thirty percent of the recovery, some for forty. Fifty seems to be on the high side from what I've seen. Is that negotiable?
No, sir.
Okay.
Um, TRI is. You know, I don't want to stand up here and do too much for cheerleading, but at the end of the day, TRI is the original of, of this whole concept of recovery. And Lily is, God bless her, she is just very, very focused in what she is able to do. But, and I, and I say this in a, in a little way, I now, don't know what group that you are referring to or what company, doesn't matter. Uh, what I do know is that we have come in on the heels of many and we have found money when they didn't. So, again, a little bit, not being cheeky, but thirty percent of fifty bucks is not as good as fifty percent on a two thousand.
No, but there are other firms that do this and.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Ab- absolutely. You're, you're not misinformed.
Alright. Anyone else?
I just, I just wanted to say thank you to Glenn for coming out. Uh, I appreciate it. Uh, I think, and I'm not going to make a decision for the committee, but I think it's something that we have to think about. Uh, and I, I would propose that we would get back to you on, on what our decision would be.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you.
Sorry.
Sorry. Supervisor Cattle.
Oh, thank you. Um, I'm actually uh, more interested in moving forward uh, more quickly here. I, I mean, I would think that we could put together, uh, as there are multiple firms that do this, uh, put together a simple one-page RFP. Uh, uh, I'm sure we could throw something together here very quickly. Um, advertise, uh. Let's get some proposals, let's evaluate them, let's, let's get, let's get it done. I mean, I, I think that's my, my slant on this. There may only be one company interested in the uh, in the process and. On the other hand, uh, just would put that out there, if this is a professional service, then perhaps we don't need to go through that process. Perhaps we can um, move forward, um. Yeah.
Administrator Moore.
I, I, I had just been discussing that concern with the, with Kevin as well as the chairman, uh, as to whether or not we would require a, a, a competitive process. Or, or whether it would meet its whole source criteria. So um, I, I, you know, perhaps what we could do if the committee's inclined to move forward today is we can have it subject to the review of the purchasing director. And uh, we can report back on, on whether, whether we need to RFP it. And if we don't, then we could advance this as a resolution for the board meeting.
Sounds like a plan.
So do we need a resolution to move this or? Supervisor Stroll, alright, sorry. Cattleber?
Alright.
Thanks for the promotion. Um, I um, I would say that. We could move without objection from the committee, we, we could move forward. Um, I don't know that we need an exact resolution. Well, the staff does its due diligence on this, but I mean, you need something to authorize the staff to uh, begin their review. I'd be happy to introduce that.
Okay.
I'll give an interest resolution to authorize us to look into this matter and to come back to the committee, uh, the possibility of a, a resolution to complete this audit.
Right. Subject to approval by the uh, purchasing director, right?
I might add the county attorney as well and county administrator.
Very good. Second.
I'll second that. Maybe we can find the seven thousand dollars that caused us to take care of these charges.
That'd be nice. So. Have a motion, a second, uh, any discussion? There's being none. Was the question all in favor?
Aye.
Any objection? So be it. Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you.
Probably be in touch, uh, Superintendent Pejos.
We'll report on the results of that review at the next committee meeting.
Thank you. Alright, uh. Excuse me. Referral pending items regarding changes to concrete area front entrance municipal center. It was determined the grant funding Southern Warren County Sound Water Conservation District was not available, but funding may be remaining with the court project. Preliminary design ideas and costs and photos were provided and the committee members asked to provide their ideas for alternate plans to the superintendent of public works. To be included in the next committee meeting agenda for discussion and consideration. And that was from the end of February to this meeting. Uh, Mr. Pejos.
Uh, I will report that I did not receive any, any comments from any supervisors regarding the front entrance. Uh, if you would like me to go forward with the plans that we had submitted and, and the first part of this will be the, the concrete area. Where we, we talked about some more green spaces and then the second to this, which we're not ready to move forward with yet would be. Uh, would be the parking area out front and the turnaround. So if everyone was, everyone was in agreement with the concrete area where we proposed two new green spaces as well as moving the. Uh, the crime victims memorial to the other sidewalk out here, uh, then that's what we would move forward with. And currently we have enough money in the court funding to be able to do that project. That'll also be to redo the granite steps out front there as well.
Very good. Excellent. I had comments and I apologize, not to that part, but to the parking. So when we get to that, I'll, when I can talk, uh, Supervisor Thomas.
Yeah, though, my only comment would be, I think if you're going to do this other large long parking lot, it ought to be connected with the, with the court. I think so. Somebody gets in there, they, they want to go with the court, they go over there. You know, it doesn't have to be completely just, just a road.
Thank you for that. Thank you, Supervisor Thomas. Supervisor McGowan.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I too, Kevin, uh, slipped on, on that, you know, I, I have a little markup and I do want to talk to you about that. Uh, I personally think the parking lot is oversized and I'd like to see something done. Uh, with the entrance here that can sometimes be a little dangerous crossing and coming and, you know, uh, there's a lot of traffic that comes in and out of there, so. But on the front entrance, I'd, I'd really like to see more green. Um, I just think that the um, that front parking lot. Really, we, the front entrance is not used, so we're going to create more of a green space and this and that. Um, and have the memorial over there, we could concentrate on that. But it, because it really is a beautiful entrance when you look over here, but we don't use it. You know, the, 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 the main use is, you know, DMV. That's where really everybody comes in and out. So I, I'd like to concentrate on, on really some more green because you, if you drive by, you look, the parking lot, you know. We do have a nice grass area. That's what I'd like to at least have this area. Um, looking in front of the doors and that is more green. And you know, and drop down that parking lot on either side and if it, and if it's possible, if we need to add a little on this side. You know, for the court, that would, that would be great, but we can, um, we can go over that. So I apologize. I, I had it right here and you walked out last time and I said, oh, I forgot to talk to him. So remind me.
Well. Is that it, Mr. McGowan? Anyone else? More comments? Okay, we'll move along to.
Not on the committee?
That's okay.
If you don't mind, but I'm, I'm just curious, this seems like an aesthetic expenditure. Is it really necessary? That'll be a question that'll come up during the board meeting.
Yeah, I, I will talk to that. When, when Clark Patterson originally came here for the court. Uh, for all the court work. Uh, and John Norris went around and talked to all the departments, mainly in the court system of what needed to be done. This was part of that in the beginning, uh, is to kind of clean up that front entrance. The granite steps are not in that great a shape. Uh, and removing some of the concrete, that's, I mean, that's not, it's not a significant amount of work, Supervisor Wild. Minimal at best. Uh, and we're talking about putting some plannings. There's been some discussions before about, besides the crime victims memorial, maybe in the green spaces that I had shown on those plans. Doing something for some of the judges, uh, as a memorial to some of the judges here, uh, or past judges here at Warren County. Uh, again, we're concentrating, there's, there's more court work going on right now. We just had a meeting and that's, I believe I was going to discuss next. We had a meeting with, uh, the judges as Judge Smith, Judge Mueller and Judge Offerdu to go over the final court. Repairs, rehabs that need to take place. Uh, and again, that was in the, the initial walk around with the courts. That was one of the items on discussion. Uh, but again, it's a minimal amount of work. You're removing concrete, you're putting in topsoil and you're doing some plannings.
Supervisor Cattleber.
Yeah, I mean, it's no longer the main entrance to the building, is it? And, and the same thing with the court. So it's, it's, you know, design follows function. And so now it's, it's a, it's a. Secondary access, uh, primarily for employees and, and supervisors. The, uh, if you look at the concrete, it's spalling, it's teething, it's shifted. We, we either replace it as is, or we reduce it. And um, my guess is it's probably less expensive to put some topsoil and seed down than it is to pour concrete. And in this respect, I would agree with Supervisor McGowan that the um, we don't need a huge promenade of concrete. Coming into this area any longer because it's not, it's not a main entrance to the building. It's not a collection point of people. It's, it's a secondary action. So introducing the concrete, putting some uh, grass area in, some landscaping, perhaps some rain gardens, uh, is a wise thing. But if you look at, on your way out today, you take a look at the concrete and, and, and take a look at the stairs, especially the granite steps and whatever, it's, it's. I don't want to call it a hazard, but it's, it's, it's not good. And up into and including where the concrete meets the granite curb out at the drive is, there's a significant lift there now. And all of these things are, if at some, we can remediate them and reduce the slope of what the, the hardened surface. I think it's, from a capital construction point of view, it's uh, less expensive and I think from a maintenance point of view, it's a level of effort as well. Because you don't have the concrete, you don't have to put the salt down, you don't have the plowing, you don't have the shoveling, you don't, you don't, you see what I'm saying? In other words, there's, there's a level of effort required here as well. I'm taking a long time on this, uh, but it's something.
Okay. My humble opinion is anytime, especially in this day and age with environmental concerns, et cetera. Anytime you can reduce impervious areas as to everybody's benefit with respect to stormwater runoff, salt, et cetera. So from that standpoint, in my opinion, I, I think it's a good idea to reduce that and provide more green space, no matter how small that may be. Anyone else? Uh, Supervisor Thomas.
Yeah, um, as we're discussing it, I, I think that you could take that parking lot and cut it in half. You know, back down easy, yeah, easy and still have plenty. Maybe you make the core parking lot a little bigger or something, if necessary, but.
Well. Superintendent Hayes, this personnel will review that as they proceed with.
Because that's a lot of parking for, out in the front.
It is.
You know, most people that park there are going to end up walking around with a DPW or DP, you know, motor vehicles.
Right. Is that it? Thank you. Supervisor Stroll.
Yeah, I, I uh, I agree with Brad and everything Brad said. I also was thinking too, that we might want to take a look at having the access to this reduced parking area. Come directly rather than off the side. When you go around that very sharp bend, and I know that you're taking the sharpness out of the bend as part of your proposal. But you're conflicting with traffic over your side. Whereas if you got rid of that traffic by immediately putting them in the parking area, that'd be, reduce the conflicts elsewhere on the ring road.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll, I'll talk to that a little bit, Supervisor Stroll. That whole front entrance is. Is not that great of an entrance. Uh, the, the fact that there's no stop on the ring road. Uh, that's one of the reasons that we push the traffic over there because it gets them away from the conflicts that are out front here. Uh, with cars coming in and either going left, right, and then somebody on the ring road not even stopping because they don't have a stop sign. Well, uh, so that would be my proposal is to still keep it over on that side based on traffic because you have, when they get to that corner. Where we've shown the entrance to that parking lot, provides plenty enough sight distance. Uh, for people to see if somebody was going to make a turn in that parking lot. But out here, and, and I'm sure we've all experienced a lot of times, you don't know which way a car is going because they don't have a signal on and they're just coming in. Either going towards the sheriff's going left or, or going right to a run DMV and then somebody on the ring road, again, not having to stop. Uh, it becomes a significant conflict out front here.
Yes, and Kevin, I agree with you. The current arrangement, your logic, hundred percent. However, if we're going to look at um, redoing the configuration coming in here, I would still leave it open as an option because. If they redo that configuration. The, it may come back to that as being the best entryway to that parking lot. But we won't know that until we have some kind of a traffic manager take a look at that.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll move along to uh. With regard to the use, the former jail building, the committee was advised testing had been completed and abatement would cost two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Along with interior demolition, rough costs between one hundred thousand to two hundred thousand dollars. That was at the end of. February, our last meeting, uh.
So just a, a quick update on that. We've put out an LOA now to our five, to our five consulting firms. Uh, to come back with a cost associated with doing the, the design plans for demolition. I have since received from Atlantic Testing Laboratories, the abatement plans. As well as them asking for a petition uh, of asbestos variants through the Department of Labor. They asked me to take a look at the variants to see if I would sign off on this. And basically what the variants is stating is that the crawl space that has uh, that has the soil in it. Uh, if, we were initially looking at removing the soil or having a firm or a company remove the soil during the abatement process by hand. Uh, that would be a significant amount of work and typically they would try to remove, you know, probably two to three inches of soil in that crawl space. The variants proposes to do one of two things, either fill that area with flowable fill, uh, which would just encapsulate it. First thing, uh, uh, to discuss to the variants, the first thing they would have to do would be to any visible material, asbestos. Material that they see, they would have to remove. Once the visible material is removed. Then what they would do is, is either use flowable fill, which is a lightweight concrete. Uh, typically it would be a thickness of about three inches to fill that crawl space. Uh, or encapsulate the, the remainder of the, the soil in that area. Or use the EDPL type of systems, which is similar to the systems you put on a roof with a membrane system over there. We're looking at both costs right now. Uh, you know, from, from my initial review, I would believe going the route of. Uh, a flowable fill, lightweight concrete would be more cost effective than it would be to, to put the uh, EDPL systems down. Those systems are very labor intensive and that's, you know, putting, putting one or two individuals in that crawl space and then handing them materials and. Placing them and putting a, a fabric over them. I, I, you know, the flowable fill would be. The, the best way I can put it is a concrete truck pulling up and them pouring the fill into our crawl space area. Uh, and that's not labor intensive. Typically they would chalk out on the foundation walls, three inches up, give or. Typically, they would chalk out on the foundation walls, three inches up, give or take, and then they would allow the flowable fill, which is similar, you know, it flows almost like water, so that it would just cover that whole entire area. So, that's the variants they're proposing. I don't need a decision from the committee of which way to go. That's, they're going to propose both those to Department of Labor, and we're just waiting for the Department of Labor to come back and give us a green thumbs. Then, when we went for the abatement plans, we could specify or even do an alternate to which way to go, whether we would use the flowable fill or the membrane system. And we could put both of them in the bid to see which one would come in at a better price. So, with that being said, as I said, the consultants have the LOA right now, I believe they're due back by April 1st to determine who will do the demolition plans for us. I don't want to go ahead and do the abatement before we have kind of demolition plans in place, because I think it would be ideal to do them both at the same time.
Supervisor McGowan?
Thank you, Kevin.
Sorry.
I just have to throw out my monthly statement, just still waiting for another report, but.
I'm not waiting on any reports.
Our bit, but hey, what's wrong with a closed cell phone?
That's, that's very similar to that membrane system that they're referring to. But again, we need approval from DOL first, so I'm, I'm waiting on, you know.
The only reason I'm saying that is I know there's, you know, moisture content down there, you know, and if you're just putting that, you know, I know the concrete you're speaking of, so it's still going to absorb a moisture in that, but to seal all that off, I mean, to go in there with a hose and a gun, one person, and that, you know, he can spray up the walls and everything and insulate that and then just come right across the floor and seal that. I mean, it doesn't have to be level, we're really not using it for anything. But that will encapsulate it, and they have all different grades of, you know, phones to use, especially the marine grade, but the hardness of it. I mean, I have come across it where I've had to, you know, corset up through, and it just amazes me, but basically all we're doing, we're looking to seal it off, but we can also get an arm factor out of that too at the same time. That's the only reason I'm looking into, because you're still going to have to get a hose down there and a pumper and the concrete, and that's a lot of concrete down there, but so much easier if we get the approval, one guy masked up everything, go right in there, and pshhh. That would, that would be a, to me, be a huge cost saving, so.
Superintendent Pageos?
I will, I will definitely look into that. You know, by no means am I the expert on asbestos. That's why we call consultants in to do that, and I'm assuming that they propose these two, because those are typically what are used with something like this, but I will surely ask them about that closed cell spray foam.
Thank you. Supervisor Conover?
Just that I think that, I'm happy this has moved forward, and I think the, you know, I understand, I might be willing to think more about it in a hardened approach if I knew what the program was going to be. In other words, it's almost like that part of the remediation plan has, you know, a relationship with what the space is going to be for going forward, and it might be actually, the cheapest thing might be just to stake down a plastic membrane for now, and if the variants can be secured, call it a day. And then later, if we had a use, and we had a program or project that required a hardened floor or an insulated floor, we could, there's nothing in doing that that precludes us from doing something more later on should that be required. Anyway, I just looked at, I was just thinking out loud a little bit.
Yeah, thank you. I think the bottom line, it's going to be based on cost, because it's not really, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not really a functional space, correct?
A crawl space.
It is a crawl space, and if anything in future development in there, we would probably use that crawl space possibly to run utilities, that would be it, nothing more.
Thank you. Anyone else, anything else? If not, we'll move down to pertaining to ongoing discussion regarding the proposed Joseph Warren Center, the former detention center. Committee was notified that Labella Associates was working on plans to convert former detention center building. There was a meeting later in the week regarding the plans.
Yeah, that, that meeting that we had, Labella did not have the plans yet, they were, they were currently working on them. We, we had existing plans from them, they had come out and do a scan on the existing facility. We are waiting on Labella to provide us their conceptual plans of the space. I talked with Tom Sembrani this past week, and he thinks something by the end of this week, we should have somebody in this week to go over.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions about that? Supervisor Conover?
Yeah, I would recommend, Mr. Chairman, that as soon as we have the project not necessarily finalized in terms of the cost, or at least scoped and proofed the cost, that some type of email is sent out to the board, to the providers, and then say, this is going to come to the board, and undoubtedly, we're looking at, you know, a serious amount of money, and, which I believe needs to, needs to be expended for this purpose, but let's make sure everybody understands this is not going to cost, you know, $20,000 or $30,000, which is a serious, serious thing to remediate this structure, and so I would try to communicate that early in the process.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I was just going to add on is, is I know that the Historical Society, and I believe even Wayne has offered up his services, they're going to look for some grant funding, and I think there's some out there, and I believe Terry talked last time at the meeting that she was going to look into some of the ones that I had mentioned as well.
She did. Okay, any other discussion on that? If not, go to privilege of the floor. Mr., oh, sorry, Supervisor McGowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We discussed earlier going into a executive session, so I could talk for the informed employee performance and that, but I will, due to being 11:15 and staying on schedule, I would like to see if I can defer that to our next county facility meeting, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lehman, any public comments?
Hi, Chairman Bruno. There's nothing on YouTube right now.
Thank you. Supervisor Drossi?
Yeah, Supervisor Bruno, thank you. As not a member of the committee, I just want to take one minute to raise two issues for your committee's consideration, and that is, the first thing, to consider acquiring some form of a backdrop, whether it's a large county seal or backdrop that we see routinely when photos are being taken, official ceremonies that take place. You know, just last week, we had five women honored, and we brought them up front, and there was a press release almost immediately, but the backdrop was, you know, the dais, which has got computer screens and electric wires running all over there. Anyhow, we all see what these backups are, how formalized they are and how professional they look. So, I would just ask you for consideration, perhaps to think about that for the committee, if you'd like, I could bring it up the entire board meeting, but I thought this would be a good first step. And the second issue is the board room in general. I realize that I'm fairly new to this board and to the process, but just as you look around, the age of it, the projection, the electric wires that are running, the window coverings, you know, as I look right now, I can see a few folks, but I can see their names, but you can't make out their faces. The desks, the chairs, just in general, you know, how can we upgrade that if there's any interest whatsoever? So, I leave you with those two issues, the backdrop, the room in general, and again, I'd be happy to assist where necessary and bring it up at a board meeting if you felt that was the right place, but I thought maybe this was a good first step.
Thank you. Just by way of information, we did this past year redo the windows, they had vertical blinds, I believe, that were not in the greatest shape. They were removed, the, I'll let Mr. Pageos speak to it if you would like.
Yeah, I just, Supervisor Garagi, I can kind of give you a little bit of history. We've talked, since I've been here in 2008, I think this has been brought up numerous times, but it always has come that no one's ever really wanted to make the change. We've had some ideas in the past. I know Essex County has, you know, kind of one U-shaped, you know, kind of setup where all these metal desks are. I'd be more than willing to look at that if that's what the committee would want to do. We have done some updates in here. We fixed, to some degree, the cold that was coming in the windows, we put the new shades in here, the vertical shades were, were poorer, and the lighting in here was poorer when the sun came in in the afternoon. Now, we have the, the new shades in place, which I think has, has, has helped in that situation. It is warmer in this room, definitely than it has been in the past, but it always has come up as a topic since I've been here, but it's never gone anywhere. But if the committee desires, I'd be happy to start looking into, to an update to, to the facility, and I think it would involve more people. I mean, as you said, with the wires, the screens, IT would have to be involved in it as well, and of course, our buildings and ground staff.
Yeah, I think we could put it on the agenda for next meeting and talk about it. I don't want to get into it today necessarily. Supervisor McGowan?
Yes, thank you. On the shades, who was the final one to decide it on those shades? The only reason I'm saying that is because we went from a solid shade, and we wanted it translucent. To me, this is more of a screen, but it is brutal, especially on that side for any, anybody to see who's sitting on that side in the sun. And for an insulation factor, I was looking at a semi-translucent, you know, like honeycomb shade, that, that's the idea that I saw over there, that way we could have lowered it and, you know, you could cut out that sun up there, but still be able to see out, you know, down below. But unfortunately now, and I'm not picking on it, but that wouldn't have been the shade that I would have picked, but they do look nice, but unfortunately, we can't see anything on a nice sunny day over there, you know, on the screen, that is. I mean, so it's so nice to have everybody in person.
I, I think that was the last facility chair.
I don't remember seeing that swat on my desk.
Okay, anything else? Not all.
Thank you for your time. There's a, there's a meeting coming up in a few minutes, the joint Public Works and Public Safety Committee, just so everyone's aware of it, I'm unable to chair that, but I have asked Supervisor Brammer, who's the vice chair of our committee, to co-chair that meeting, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Most do adjourn. Supervisor Conover, second Supervisor Thomas. Discussion, all in favor? Thank you both. Thank you, everyone.